Good evening, welcome everyone to the June 3rd, 2020 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order and we do have a quorum tonight. So our first item of business will be to approve the minutes of the April 29th, 2020 meeting and the May 6th, 2020 Planning Commission meetings.
Make a motion to approve? A second.
Motion to approve and second, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our first, we have two public hearings tonight. The first item will be a zoning application for approximately 0.54 acres located along South Manny Avenue, north of East Castle Street, to be rezoned from CH and CCO to PUD, the Manny Station PUD, and CCO. Rhett Kelton is the applicant and Mr. Blomley is going to present for us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Our first public hearing tonight, as you mentioned, is for a rezoning request located along the west side of South Manny Avenue. It's in the block in between East State Street and East Castle Street. It's two parcels and they're the area in red on the map that's on the screen right now. They're both zoned commercial highway and they're both located within the City Core Overlay District. There's one single-family home on the northern parcel. The southern parcel, which is the smaller of the two, is currently vacant. It's surrounded on all sides by a land that's also zoned commercial highway and located in the City Core Overlay District. There are a variety of uses in the area directly across the street is Mr. Randy Fan's Development, two-story office retail building that's under construction. To the south, there is a commercial building, small commercial building located at the corner of Manny and Castle. To the north, there's a single-family home and a apartment building located in the corner of State and Manny and there are some single-family dwellings scattered to the west of the subject property. Mr. Kelton, represented by Mr. Roundtree, are requesting a rezoning to PUD land unit district for a mixed-use development called Manny Station. And Mr. Roundtree will go over the proposed development in more detail in a moment, but just a little bit of background, the first floor of the development would be primarily commercial and retail in nature. There's a list of uses that are proposed to be permitted, a list of commercial uses that would be proposed to be permitted on the first floor. There are somewhat neighborhood, commercial-type uses that would serve, that would serve the downtown area. There would be one accessible unit on the, one accessible dwelling unit, a handicapped accessible dwelling unit on the first floor. Then there would be six dwelling units on the second floor and six dwelling units on the third floor and all of these would be units that would be for sale via a horizontal property regime. So there'd be a total of 13 dwelling units on the property. With the acreage, which is actually .47 acres, Mr. Roundtree sent me a correction on that earlier today, that equates to a density of about 28 dwelling units per acre. Now, the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan recommends that the property develop as neighborhood commercial. The request is, is not really consistent with the neighborhood commercial designation. The neighborhood commercial land use character designation is described as follows. It would be professional offices, convenience stores, dry cleaners, post offices, coffee shops, and drugstores. And directly to the west of what's reckoned for neighborhood commercial is urban commercial mixed use. And the proposed development is more compatible with the urban commercial mixed use. And so if you see on the map that I have on the screen, you'll notice the area in the pink is the neighborhood commercial, which lines North Manny Avenue, and the area directly to the west in the tan color is the urban commercial mixed use, which includes multifamily residential, entertainment, restaurants, and other retail, general and professional offices where streets are framed by buildings with zero, minimal front setback, multi-story structures which are conducive for pedestrian activity, and structured, and on-street parking where low-density residential uses should not be permitted. So this development that Mr. Roundtree will go over in a moment is more compatible with the urban commercial mixed use recommendation of the 2035 Plan, which is directly to the west of the proposed neighborhood commercial land use character. So the Planning Commission will need to, during the course of tonight's public hearing, determine if this would be an appropriate instance to de-ate from the comprehensive plan and to determine if that urban commercial mixed use land use character would indeed be appropriate for the South Manny Avenue area. With that being said, I'll ask Mr. Roundtree to come up and give you a brief presentation with more specific details on the development itself. And I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Blomley. Welcome, Mr. Roundtree. How are you tonight?
Chairman Jones, Commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree, Health and Steel Engineering. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you tonight. It's good to see you in person. Matthew, thank you for all your help, even as of today. So it's a good thing. We're excited to present to you Manny Station. And I am accompanied by the architect, Mr. Brian Oliver, so if you have specific architecture questions, he's here, as well as the potential developer, Mr. Rhett Kelton, is here to talk about why in this particular area. But as Matthew mentioned, Manny Station, the reason we're excited about is that I think Mr. Kelton really had a vision for what could possibly happen here. And I think where we run into a little bit of the snag with the 2035 Plan with the neighborhood commercial versus the urban commercial is that it's the component of the residential component. And he wanted to bring people downtown. And the CCO was a high catalyst for this development. He saw the opportunity to bring some density downtown. He also saw the opportunity to do a mixed-use development. So with that in mind, he'll get more into the details about why, but that's why we feel like it's a really strong location for what we're proposing. So with that in mind, as Matthew mentioned, it is commercial highway all around the property, but we are really trying to take advantage of the CCO guidelines and trying to take advantage of both the density allocations as well as the sewer allocation. That'd be really critical for this development. As far as overall utilities, they're all serviced from, from South Manny. South Manny was improved about seven to 10 years ago as far as the streetscape, so we're trying to take advantage of that. It looks really, really good. The building that's going to be taken down is kind of in rough shape, as long as a few other buildings on that street. So the fact that the streetscape's been improved will really help our development. Overall, the site, it's a little bit unique in the fact that it slopes off pretty back, to the back, about six to eight feet along the, basically it rolls off of South Manny. So the rear portion of the development is really basically the parking area. So that's important to know. The building will be basically facing the street and towards the upper part of the site. As Matthew mentioned, the overall aerial really kind of explains the story. It really is a conglomeration of all different types of uses. Across the street is a commercial building that's under construction. It's a tall two-story. It really looks more like a three-story building to me because it has a pretty large scale to it. Our building will be consistent scale to that building. Right next to us is a salon that's an older building. Mr. Kelton spoke to them. If this goes well, there may be a chance of acquiring that building. As well as 412 is a single-family residence that was purchased about the same time that Mr. Kelton purchased these two pieces of property. We've spoken to the owner. He called me yesterday just inquiring about what's going to happen and we're not sure if he's got commercial interest or not, but it is a single-family home now. From my understanding, it's not in great shape. So it is, it's kind of the, basically the collision of residential homes with commercial development with multifamily, all kind of thrown into the mix. So the fact that we're encouraging a mixed use with residential and commercial, I feel like is appropriate. As far as the adjacent homes and pictures, the home on the top left, top right, excuse me, top left corner, that is the home that's going to be removed. So Mr. Kelton purchased that home as well as the vacant lot to the left. As far as the home that I was mentioning, on the bottom left-hand corner, that is the home to the adjacent right. And that is the home that's currently not in use, we believe. That was one purchased at the same time that more than likely would be torn down for some type of commercial use. As was mentioned, on the corners, there's commercial development, basically on most of the corners adjacent to this property. And then the bottom right-hand corner shows you the upgrades to Manny, South Manny. And that's really streetscape, pavers, on-street parking. So very pleasant and well-done. The top left-hand corner of this slide shows the building across the street, as I mentioned, is the tallest two-story. I'm not, I guess it'll eventually be all brick. It's not finished yet, so I'm assuming that'll be all brick when it's completed. And as Matthew mentioned, I guess it's going to be a mix of office and retail potentially. The only other slide of interest is on the bottom right-hand corner, that is the snail, it's a hair salon that's next to the adjacent property on the bottom right-hand corner. The site plan is, in essence, the overall square footage that we're proposing is a little over 13,000 square feet. That's all three stories combined. There'll be a few, a few hundred feet of living space on the rooftop as well, as far as it'll be a rooftop patio area. The commercial portion of the property would be a little over 3,900 square feet and that'll be basically primarily the first floor. And then residential will have about 9,500 square feet between the second and third floor. As Matthew mentioned, there are six units per floor. The average size units around 550 square feet. So these are really going to be one-bedroom units, which I feel like is also unique to this development. There's not a lot of developers doing one-bedrooms and that's what's pushing our density up because basic gear density is based on your units. So we have a lot of units. If they're a two-story, our density would be in half, I mean, if they're two-bedroom units. So as Matthew mentioned, on the first floor, there is one accessible unit that the builder thought was important to have and the architect agreed with that. So with that in mind, we have, we have basically 13 residential homes, basically attached homes. And there's parking that is required, is 25 spaces. We were able to provide 27 spaces. There's also some on-street parking, potential three-spaces as well. So with that in mind, the scale of the building, Mr. Oliver's going to come up and talk about the architecture, but we feel like it fits well in the site. I mean, granted, it's tight, but that's part of the being downtown. It's a little tight on the perimeter yards. We're asking for an exception on the basically overall width of those perimeter yards, down to about three feet. But at the same time, it fits and we feel like it's going to be an attractive building that can augment the neighborhood and really kind of get momentum going along South Manny. So with that in mind, Brian, if you'd come up and speak about the architecture, the next two slides are yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brian Oliver. Architecturally, we have worked with the, with the planning staff to hopefully meet their requirements, which a lot of times we work with, on projects, we talk about how it meets the ground and how it meets the sky. And we've done some projects before with, with y'all and I think we've got, we've got some of those things met with, this is all brick. We've got five different colors of brick on the building, commercial glass across the front, on the street side, and the two sides, the two shorter sides. Each residence ends up with a balcony as well. And then at the roof, there is a rooftop area that the units can access as well. There's the, the back as well. These two slides are mine? Two, two interior stairs have access, allow the tenants to have access, but we've also got some security issues where we've got doors have key cards so that only the, only the tenants can get into the building. I know that's an issue that we want to make sure we take care of. Happy to answer any questions, but I'd also let, you want to go back to it?
Can you go back to the first slide? I don't lift your head because I missed that if that was the front of the building.
That one, okay.
So retail in all of those, on the bottom, except one space is going to be a residential unit on the, on the bottom?
On the back, on the back.
On the back, okay.
Yes, ma'am. So on the front, it's all residential, all commercial.
I see.
And on the back, there's access for one unit that is residential.
Okay.
You used the term tenants, but I understood it was a horizontal regime, so are they going to be owner?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
A tenant is just somebody that, sorry.
Okay.
In my term, a tenant is somebody that lives there.
On your list of permitted uses, one of the uses is tobacco, cigarettes, and vaporized sales. Would you be opposed to moving that over to the prohibited list? And the reason I say that is I think you've got a beautifully designed building and I just would hate to see a discount tobacco shop stuck right in the middle of this project.
Well, Matthew brought that up and we would love to keep the vaporizing store so people could vaporize. I had, it's supposed to be a vape store, so Matthew brought it up. I'm like, wouldn't that be cool, a vaporizing store? Where'd you go? So yes, we could take away the tobacco and the vapor sales as well. And then Mr. Martin brought up the possibility taking out the laundry as well. And Ron, I spoke to Mr. Kelton, he's fine with that as well. It's not what we're shooting for, obviously. And Mrs. Jones, to your, to your, just for clarity, it shows three kind of storefront, but, but really it's going to be a wide-open space. So there could be two, you know, two offices associated with one set of doors. That's going to be kind of wide open based on how the tenant mix breaks down. I think he would love to shoot for a professional office. He'd love to have a little local coffee shop. The proximity to downtown makes it very favorable for young professionals to, you know, have an office space and, and live there. And I really, Mr. Kelton will get into the vision, but I'm excited because I think it brings kind of an affordable housing component in a very nice-looking building. The fact that it's 550-square-foot units means that a young couple can buy it and they can live there and have the downtown experience without, you know, really breaking the bank and, and have a unique lifestyle. And it can afford you for the live, work, play, you know, live, you know, work downstairs and live upstairs potential, but really the proximity to downtown, which makes it so attractive to us. With that in mind, there's two more slides, just the rooftop area. All this, all the units will be kind of sandwiched between the stair accesses. There'll be raised gardens on top, patio furniture, dining, you know, tables, those kind of things. But that's becoming a real trend. We're seeing downtown. This will kind of be unique because it's on a, you know, a kind of a joint-use building versus a single-family residence. I think it's a real attractive amenity for this particular building. And that's really the only thing I'd like to bring to light, but Mr. Kelton, why don't you come up and share why, why here, why now?
Hey, thanks for having me. Appreciate y'all being here. So when I first saw this property, I was driving past it and saw a little sign in the yard, called the gentleman who had it, talked to him. He ended up saying, hey, this used to be a meth house. I think I told that before. I was like, holy crips, I didn't realize this was down there. But, so we ended up talking about it, just looking about the whole area. I was very, very impressed about the, how the, what do you call it, the streetscape? How that's been done down there. But I was curious about why. Nothing else was really going up, excited, exciting. Then I realized how close we were to downtown. And I was like, man, this would be an awesome place for, like he said, some sort of young couple to live upstairs, come downstairs, work, in the evenings, maybe walk four blocks to the square, have a drink or go out for dinner down there, and then be able to walk back in the evening if they wanted to go upstairs to the rooftop, hang out with some friends, or some neighbors. They would certainly have that option. I just think it's a, it's a great, great place and I think the city's done a whole lot to, to get to this point. Done some fantastic works, making a sort of vibrant downtown and it's continuing to get that way. This is just one small part of it, I think, but I think it could be a, a good precursor to what can come in the future. He'd asked me who, who could be some potential people that might want to purchase these homes and he said, young couple, just starting out, instead of spending a whole bunch of money, $200,000, $300,000 to buy a home in the suburbs, well, let's live downtown, have that urban environment that, that might be fun. Maybe it's a couple that are downsizing, that are, just want to have that downtown Maybe it's a grad student. I mean, we're only, it's what, less than two miles to MTSU? I think that would be an awesome place. And I know when my wife was in grad school, it would have been, it would have been great to be that close to, to school. I'm just excited about it. Hopefully y'all will be excited about it and figure out how we can get this going and continue to get this whole area getting better and better. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions?
I just want to tell you, we are excited about it. And, and we may not look as excited as you do, but, but, but we really are. And truthfully, when the Manny project was originally proposed to go in there and address a drainage issue that we were having in the downtown area and address some of the flooding concerns that we had in the downtown area, it was started out as a drainage project and it was proposed that, let's make it a main corridor because it really was part of the main corridor coming through Murfreesboro one time. And so when the road was upgraded, it was upgraded with the idea that it would really stimulate the area that it was located in. And, and that's been kind of slow in coming, but the, but, but you're absolutely what was intended when that road was developed. So thank you for doing it. I think it's a phenomenal project.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Kelton or Mr. Roundtree before we open the public hearing?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Wait just a minute, okay? We have some people outside that would like to come in and speak, so. Come right up to the podium and just state your name and address and give us your comments regarding this application.
My name is Allen McAdoo and I'm a property owner on Manny's Avenue.
Okay.
Side this project. And I want to say that I'm definitely in favor of it because in this area, we hadn't really put any money in this area. And a project like this maybe will open up an entire area and for the betterment. And I'm definitely 100% in favor of it.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to come down and speak to us tonight. Mr. McKnight, was there anybody else out there? We have no one else. We will close the public hearing and ask for any additional comments or questions from the Planning Commission. I think you want to just confirm the requests we made on changes to the approved uses?
I would move for approval with the understanding that no laundry and no tobacco vaping type businesses be located in the building. They should be moved to the prohibited list.
Okay. You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all coming down. Thank you. All right. Our next item will be a zoning application for approximately 5.09 acres located along North Thompson Lane to amend the North Thompson Place PUD, also known as Gateway Village, to expand the uses permitted. Swanson Development LP is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Jones, Planning Commission members. Our second and final public hearing this evening is for you to consider a zoning amendment for an existing PUD plant. The, the image on the screen isn't for this project, just FYI. The images really aren't as important with this project, but it's an existing PUD that's owned by the Swanson family located along Thompson Lane, adjacent to the hospital, being separated from the hospital by the Greenway. This property is an existing mixed-use development, one of the very few true mixed-use developments we have in Murfreesboro. And as such, there are three buildings. Buildings A and B are the ones that are perpendicular to Thompson Lane and Building C is parallel and has the most residential units and parking garage in it. This application was originally approved in 2008 by City Council and as such, specific standards were applied to the property, including the uses permitted. The owner has received a request to expand an office on the first floor of Buildings A and B. So staff asked him to look at the uses that are in that plan development chart comprehensively and see if there's any additional uses that he would like to add besides the office. We felt as a staff that it would be a sensible use to add offices as a permitted use in this mixed-use development and they seem to fit pretty well. I think there's one already existing and so medical offices are mostly in the back, but the office uses are primarily relegated to the second floor, but we think the first floor, they'd be very compatible uses. So the applicant is proposing to you to add some uses. These uses are already allowed in the plan development book, so it's not adding a new use that wasn't previously allowed. It's just redefining the buildings and spaces that they're allowed to be in. So Buildings A and B are the perpendicular buildings I mentioned and they would like to allow church, college, or university, business school, janitorial service, medical and testing laboratories, offices, and radio, TV, or recording studios as permitted uses in those, on the first floor of Buildings A and B. The second part of the change is for the second floor of Buildings A and B and they're proposing to allow a list of 17 uses, which as I mentioned, are allowed in the PUD, just not on the second floor. Those are student center, commercial indoor amusement, animal grooming facility, antique mall, antique store, apothecary, barber or beauty shop, book, card shop, catering establishment, clothing store, department or discount store, flower or plant store, glass, stained glass, locksmith, reducing and weight control services, restaurants, carryout restaurants, which of course would exclude drive-through windows, and specialty shops. The proposed use is consistent with our future land use map and so there are no, there's no problems with that. I did ask the applicant to consider how this would affect the traffic analysis that was originally submitted in 2008 study and you have laid out on your desk a report from Mr. Taylor, who's a representative of the application, doing some different analysis. And I asked for him to consider that the first floor, all the vacant spaces become restaurant because that is one of our more intense commercial uses. And so the assumption is that the first floor is restaurant, I believe, second floor's office, and the medical offices are in the last building. And so it looks like with, with a mixed-use development, we have an expectation of having shared parking and we know that it'll exist, but even with that scenario, which is conservative, we believe that allowing these uses and the additional floors would not drastically or negatively impact the site. But I did want to present it to you or ask them to consider it because I know it's something that you talk about with each and every application, let you know that it's something we thought about. I invite Mr. Taylor to the lectern to provide some additional information. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Chairman Jones, members of the Planning, Planning Commission, Matt Taylor of SEC. I've got Mr. Joe Swanson Jr. and a couple other representatives of Swanson Development with me. I do not have a formal presentation. I think that Ms. Green said everything that I possibly could have said, so I'll be happy to answer any specific questions that you have about the parking or the uses themselves, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions for Mr. Taylor or Ms. Green before we open the public hearing? Okay, thank you. All right, we will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Empty lobby out there, okay. Then we will close the public hearing and ask for any other comments or questions from the Planning Commission?
We don't get to hear from Mr. Swanson? I'm just kidding.
No more comments. I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
The motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank y'all very much. Good to see everybody. All right, our next item is a mandatory referral. It is to consider the abandonment of an existing MWRD, Murfreesboro Water Resources Department, water easement located within the Northfield Village subdivision along West Northfield Boulevard. Mr. Matt Taylor, on behalf of A+ Storage, is the applicant. And Ms. Green?
Thank you. This item is for you to consider a mandatory referral action. It has gone before the Murfreesboro Water Resources Board, and they, their recommendation to you and to the City Council is that you do approve their request. It is for a recorded easement where a proposed fire hydrant was to be located. The plans were amended, and then a dumpster was proposed and the location of the fire hydrant. And so this action is required because it's an easement that's been dedicated to the city, is a public easement for that fire hydrant. It's no longer needed, and so we would ask that you would recommend to City Council that this be, be abandoned. There are various informations that we will require from them before the mayor can sign that deed, and I've listed those in the staff comments, and so I would ask that your approval is subject to the staff comments.
Any questions for Ms. Green?
There's no public hearing required. Did I say public hearing?
No.
Okay, good.
I don't think I did either, but I don't know.
If there are no comments, I'll move to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Next is staff reports and other business. Nothing. Mr. Robbs, okay. Mr. Blomley?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McKnight? All right. If there's nothing further, then we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much. Good to see everybody.
Go to the record.